As you're, before we start the presentations, I'm going to ask everyone to try to keep their presentations short and concise as you can. I know that some of these are pretty big and it may be more difficult than others, but we have four major topics and we, not talking about committee updates or department end updates, and we only have an hour. So if you could get through your presentation in 10 or 15 minutes, the quicker the better so that council would have time to ask questions as well. So with that, we'll start off with a presentation of the findings for the water distribution system upgrades with Jacobs Engineering and Mr. Whitman. Jake?
Good afternoon. This is a culmination of this contract that we enacted with Jacobs Engineering to do modeling to see what the best way, both short-term and long-term, to get our water production up. This is unrelated to the problems that we've had for the most part, but it is necessary for us because we're growing. So without saying much more, if you don't have any questions for me, I'm going to bring these two gentlemen up, let them introduce herself, and they do have a PowerPoint that they will show you, and I'll be here to answer any questions you have. All right?
All right. Thank you, Jake.
Afternoon. I know many of y'all, David Stacek with Jacobs Engineering. I'm going to follow Chair's advice and go very quickly through this, but entertain any questions you may, you may have. We were brought in to basically expand upon work we did back in 2012 to update the steady-state hydraulic model for Fairhope to an extended period simulation model, to calibrate it, and then to analyze your system. I had several questions at the front. One question we were asked was, does Farip have sufficient storage of potable water to meet their city size? Based on AWA's recommendation, the city should have about 5.3 million gallons of storage, and you currently have 6.6. So unless we have an isolated issue with, with pressure in a part of town, you have adequate storage to meet AWA's recommended storage for your, your, your system size, your fire flow and emergency storage. We were, of course, next thing we looked at was your existing water, water well capacity. As you will see on this graph, truck around about four, four and a half million gallons per day, annual average until about 14. You ramped up from about four to almost six in 2019 with a max month average daily demand of 7.8 million gallons per day 2019. We also noted you had about 1.4 million gallons a day of unaccounted for water, basically water difference with what you produced in your wells and your pumps, your plants versus what you billed to your, your customers. Various reasons for that, I can go into those later if you have questions about, about that. So looking at the well capacities themselves, you have six water plants with various number of wells that pump into a reservoir, which then is pumped with a service pump into your distribution system. One of those is going to govern, the smaller one of the two governs your capacity, as well as we did some field work and observed the overall capacity of your system. Your max capacity was 9.1 million gallons per day. Your firm capacity, which basically is your capacity, largest pump out of service, which is what EPA recommends your liability, resiliency criteria, about 7.4 million gallons per day. So again, remember you're about 7.8 max day in 19, 7.4 firm capacity. So your firm capacity is slightly below your, your max day demand or monthly average day demand for your system 2019. How else ways to fix that? Probably one of the immediate things you would see back here on this prior slide on well three, your well is produced about 1750 gallons per minute, but you can pump about 1150 into your system mainly due to some pressure concerns at the, at the tank at County Road 33. You have to valve it off during high demands, and you pump that water all the way back into town, which imparts more back pressure on your pump. It causes it to produce less, less water. If we went in and installed a 16-inch line from that well on 33 to Farip Avenue and tied into the 12 and the six that's sitting there, you would basically add about 400 gallons per minute to your capacity, about half a million gallons per day. Gets you to about 7.8, 7.9 of a firm capacity. As you can see, you may know the, the line from there through Farip Avenue down to Nichols is your big backbone core of your water system to get that water into your main part of your system. Also, that line would allow you in the future, if you need to, to increase the capacity of your well to about 2,500 gallons per minute and still get that water into your system with some modifications to your operation. The other question we asked to look at was some recurring main breaks along Greenoe Road, Highway 98. So their concern showed on the, on the slide, basically between Twin Beach Road and County Road 32. As you'll note, you have three wells, wells four, five, and six that all pump into that line. We monitored that those pressures over a period of about a month. You see the pressure vary quite frankly. As low as about 20 PSI, as high as about 100 PSI. And if you, back on the prior slide real quickly, you will notice that your well capacity and your pump capacity, well capacity is smaller than pump capacity, which means those pumps are pumping out of the, out of the reservoir, draining it, turning off, well fills it back up, they pump, drain it, turn it off. So it cycles about two or three times an hour. So if you look at this section of pipe here, you got four, three wells that are pumping off, off, on, three, two, three times an hour at the max, max time, which causes constant surging and pressuring in that line. Combined with your staff observes some suboptimal trench and bedding practices within wall PVC, it's a great recipe for pipe, pipe failures. So how do we address that, that, that problem? There's some minor mods you can do. We can make some adjustments, or you can, your staff can, to the, the check valve to allow it to open and close slower, which will help mitigate those surges. Not a, not a lot of help, but, but some help for very minimal effort. Your, your wells have soft starts, so they start a little slower. Once they stop, the pressure bottoms, bottoms out. You can install surge tanks on your three wells, well four, five, and six, to dampen those, those surges, which will help, but still you'll have the repeated on and off of your, of your service pumps because they don't match your well pump. You could take some more additional steps of actually trying to match those flows by throttling the valve or putting an orifice plate. That's a, it's a solution, but static. You make one selection, you're kind of stuck unless you want to replace it with another orifice plate, or just your, throw out your valve positioning. Of course, the other more flexible way is to put a VFD on your service pumps and allow it to operate to maintain a certain level in your, in your clear well so that it doesn't have its on offs, and that, that will definitely help to, to mitigate the, the issues you're seeing along, along Greenoe Road. Again, that's not exactly economical, very cheap solution, but it would take care of those, those problems. So overall recommendations were to install the 16-inch main from well, or tree plant three to Farip Avenue. About one and a half million dollars would be a rough estimate for, for that line, including, including all construction and non-construction cost. Go ahead and adjust the check valve and look at possibly throttling those valves at the plant four, five, and six temporarily to see if that gives you some relief and to assess then your, your path forward. And then long-term or more short-term for more long-term is look at a water system matched plan to evaluate increasing, upgrading the size of water plant three. Water plant one is more centrally located, and based on some discussions with your staff and others, that, that plant could probably see another well, which would increase your capacity there. Requires upgrades to your, to your plant, but to get that water back more centrally located into your, your system. And look at your, your system instead of expanding and, and just based on what your current needs are, look at long-term, what needs to be done with your system. Look at putting some out to valves to control closing your tanks at both your County Road 33, County Road 3, Section Street, and your 3 million gallon tank near, near Walmart. So that's very brief and quick, but can talk for much longer, any questions you may, you may have.
Questions, council? Before I dive into the engineering discussion.
Looking forward to that.
Yeah, I think my first question will be, where is that additional 1 million gallons coming from?
Well, what you're doing is you're moving the, the back pressure with a bigger line, the pressure reduces, and the pump then pumps further right on its curve is the terminology, which means it pumps a more flow. So it doesn't, it just, less, less back pressure allows more flow. Pumping through a small straw, now a big straw, you can suck a lot of water through a big straw than a small straw.
Counselman, right now, it's throttled back. We can't run wide open because we will create way too much maintenance issues, broken lines and stuff. So we're throttled back, and that's what we're showing you. We have the potential to pump more there, but we don't have the potential to get it out into our system, and that's what this is going to do for us. All right.
With 5 million gallons more by putting in the new 16-inch line, help with the pressure we're seeing on Greenoe Road as far as the capacity usage?
Half a million gallons more, not 5 million gallons more.
I'm sorry, half a million gallons per day.
Okay. Um, not significantly on Greenoe Road, because that water's going to Farip Avenue. It's a long way back over to Greenoe Road, so I don't see any niggles been packed on, on Greenoe. Now, if you get further, you know, northwest, you may see some improvements because, because the keep tank, keep the tank near the old school fuller, which would help out some, but that's probably your biggest benefit.
A couple of quick questions. The 1.4 million gallons per day are 25% unaccounted for. I don't know why that jumps out. Is that, is that, is that due to leaks? Is that due to unaccounted for? Is that customers, it's, you know, that we're not charging? That's a big number. Where do you think that's coming from?
It's probably from a variety of things. Most common, it's probably old water meters or that aren't reading correctly. Water meters slow down over time. So replacing a water meter is going to often see 10, 15% increase in duty readings because they just inherently slow down. It could be deal with tracking of, you know, hydrant, people that have hydrants, connect them up to get water, could be that. It could be some, some leakage. It could be billing errors that exist, not errors, more of billing cycle issues that exist. There's a variety of reasons. At that, that rate, I have to think it's tied to water meters reading too slow. From our experience, when those been replaced, they see significant increase in the amount of water build. Not that it's billing much, not more water flowing through it, it's more accurately accounting for that water.
I don't, I don't think that you'd ever get to 100% efficiency in measuring, but what is a typical number that we should have in losses there?
Half that or less. I see if you're in the 10% or less.
10% or less.
That would be probably acceptable. If you're above, above that, you're in the action level. You can get down probably in the seven, eight percent, 6% range, but you're right, you never get to 0%. It's just, that's very difficult to do.
In your opinion, if we were to install a new well to go with the WDP number one and new pumps, how far out, how many, how many years of service is that going to buy us?
It depends on how much water you can get out of well, well one. I don't know that with get with, I think Dan O'Donnell is y'all's well, well guy, ask him that question, but I don't know, Jake, if you recall that answer?
Well, it just so happens, we replaced well one, as you're all aware, and it's way too fast. With the same setup we had when it was installed 19, 20 years ago, we gained 260 gallons per minute. Now, we can't do that because it's permitted for it, but there's a ton of water there, an absolute ton of water, and it's not significantly deep. So Mr. O'Donnell had told all of us, I think when we were at that meeting, that that's certainly one of the areas he'd look to, and also three, which is the one that we want to start with, putting the 16-inch line in. So both those wellfields are excellent. Just to let everybody know, there's a, there's a test well that we keep at all the sites or, so we could do, draw, you know, see what we're, we're working on as far as, you know, drawing the water down too much, too fast, how fast is it recurring? We haven't, over the years, I think we, six inches is what Dan said? I think it was, we've only lost six inches through the whole thing, and you know, it's, that's.
So you know where the bottom is?
Oh, yes. Well, yes, Dan O'Donnell does. He maps all that for us. Yes, absolutely.
So you say you've lost six inches over the years out of, I mean, give me an idea, are we talking 20 feet? Are we talking three feet?
No, it's 40 feet.
40 feet of height, and we lost six inches?
Yeah.
It's not much.
That's, that's, that's.
It's nothing. It's absolutely nothing. He was amazed the last time he did the drawdown that, you know, and he said that that wellfield at one particularly is really strong, and three also.
Okay. And then one, just one last question, just because I'm curious. So on the variable frequency pumps, it seems like if you put check valves or any kind of orifice in there that restricts the flow, you're, you're probably taxing your pump a lot because they're going to be running, you know, the same strength. You did say throttling back, but I don't know if you can actually throttle those pumps back. I don't know if they run at one speed or if they're, if they, but the variable speed is, is I think the state of the art that would, and they last a lot, lot longer, and they just are designed to run continuously.
From the energy usage, for certainly you're using a throttle valve orifice, you're burning electricity because burning head. So yes, a VFD is much more efficient, it matches the curve. That's no question that that is definitely a more efficient way of going than to put in orifice or put in a throttle valve. You can throttle it, different kind of valve you got there now, you can throttle it, which what you're doing now a little bit on well, water plant three, but I agree, that's not the best way of go, but it's more economical than VFDs, capital cost wise at least.
That's all my questions. Council, any other questions? Next steps, any steps waiting on? Jake?
We just need to get the capital for it and get going on it. I mean, this is not going to be a major project this first bit, and we'll work on the VFDs and see what they're going to cost us. I haven't had a chance to look at it. We would like to try to find an industry standard on that. I do like the fact that with the variable speed drive, I can match what's coming out of the well. So even if they start to slow down, they won't shut all the way off, and maybe we could come back and look at the pressures. I think that that's, you know, it's certainly going to have a massive effect on, you know, what we're seeing out there now. I originally thought that we would be able to, for lack of a better way to say it, punch more holes in the line, put feeds down streets, it takes a bit off, but this is going to be, in the long run, better and, and a lot easier for us to, you know, the VFDs, I think that we could come close to installing ourselves, you know, especially, maybe not all of them, but the, after we get the first one done, we start matching, know what we're looking at. I mean, we, we have VFDs on the new fail system, lift, lift station we have downtown, so we are familiar with, and we have several at the plant. So once we got it going, I think we could do it. I know, no problem. All right.
Thank you.
Jack, I got one question.
Yes, sir.
You're saying this is going to add half a million more gallons?
That's correct. The 16-inch line will give half a million more gallons back into the system and back into town.
I guess I'm going back to Councilman Boone's question about, you know, we know we've got issues on Greenoe Road with the water main there. Wouldn't it be more prudent to fix those issues we have rather than increase, I mean, according to available and what's recommended, we're fine capacity wise, correct?
No, I think you're, yeah, I think right now you're, you're short capacity wise. You're, which I think you probably realized in, in the May timeframe, so you're, you have plenty of storage capacity, you don't have enough regular water capacity.
Got you. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, David. Appreciate it. Ms. Mazur? A presentation of Fairhope Docks' vision plan and cost.
Yes. You have the, placed in front of you the vision plan phase, four-phase process for renovating. You have in front of you the future of Fairhope that we're recommending, the Fairhope docks, and you'll have on the screen what we had when we took the property back in 2017 and what we have been doing over the two years and eight months that we've been managing the marina. I will hand out the dollars to you momentarily. I didn't want to give them to you first because I wanted you to watch what we were doing because I knew you would all look at the dollars. If we started phase one, that is necessarily our first phase because it is the dry storage facility and all of the amenities we need with it because that is a revenue, revenue generating phase, and we need that in order to move on to the others. So that is phase one. We've discussed dry storage for quite some time. It, that is the route that we're recommending that we go. It is something that we're going to be asking for, for funding in the 2021 budget. We have put in for a 100% GOMESA grant, but everything in phase one is not applicable to that grant, doesn't meet its requirements. So that's, that's our nut. It will generate significant revenue for us to keep renovating the marina. You will notice too that I have crossed off the words painting area in phase one. We will not be doing painting. We are supplying four slots for small repairs. People can put their boats on the hard, and they can wax the bottoms of the boats, they can change props, any type of small repair, but there will not be any painting down at the Fairhope docks. That's just a toxic area we don't want to get into. That also, although minor, that is also revenue generating for us because you don't put your boat on the hard without paying for that space while you're there. It keeps the boats moving out and letting new ones come in for work, and it keeps them from getting free storage space. Phase two is pretty much land side, and a lot of the work in phase two has been done. In fact, that's where we've got the new bulkhead along the A docks and the new larger finger piers along the A docks. We took out the haul-out cell and continued the bulkhead over and attached that to the fuel dock. That is the area, the old haul-out cell that we talked about turning into the Poor Man's Yacht Club. I'm now putting that in the option category because we've managed to turn that slot into a slip, and it is occupied, and it is generating some revenue we had not expected to get. On top of which, it's not always all about revenue, but we did rebuild the hangout area down there, and it's larger and greatly improved, and that has been a significant area for our boaters to gather socially, and now with the larger space, I think that's going to take care of the social issues for the boaters for some years to come so that, while visually wonderful, and I loved it, the Poor Man's Yacht Club is something that we can wait on. There's no other project that's attached to it. It doesn't have to be built in order to go to someplace else. So that becomes something we can talk about in the future. Phase three is the pervious surface parking and the C dock and the seating gallery. Now, the seating gallery is an instance of something that qualifies for the grant that we put in for, and the things that, that are in the, the grant request cross over our phases, so we are flexible. We can accomplish the seating gallery without having to wait to finish phase one and phase two. So those things are out there and possible. The bulkhead work isn't as extensive there as it has been in the other areas, so that will be phase three. And phase four is our beach improvement area, which the beach improvement itself is also in our grant request. That's also where we're talking about placing our icon lighthouse on our recommended vision here. Out there, we have already reinforced the jetty. We've rebuilt G dock. We've rebuilt sections of F dock, and we've come in with, with bulkheads there, and we have gotten two more transient slips out of that area as a result of the work that we've done. Now, quickly, I'm going to give you the numbers, and then we'll talk about them. Now, you'll note that this is the preliminary estimate cost. The items highlighted in light blue are those items that are in the grant request, and we will know in the fall whether or not we've been given that request. The second page is everything that went then into that request. There are, it's $6.6 million project from start to finish. That's not including the work that we've already done. The grant is 2.4 million. Now, I feel compelled to tell you, just to take the gasp away from the pricing. I ran some numbers today, and I think we should be very proud of what we've done in the two years and eight months since we've opened up. We started selling fuel in June of 2018, and from that point to the end of the month of May 2020, we sold 535,891 dollars worth of food, of fuel, and that excludes sales tax. That's already been taken out. Fiscal year to date.
Can you say that number one more time? I'm sorry.
585, 891, exclusive of sales tax, from June 18th to the end of month of May. And already this fiscal year to date, we are 78% ahead in fuel sales versus the same period last year. Now, the slip revenue started October 15th, 1917, and through June, because we collect in advance, we have collected 456,500 dollars in slip rentals exclusive of sales tax. And then there've been some incidental income related to the ice machine we have down there and some items in the ship store that is still being developed. But in two years and eight months at the Fairhope docks, we've had a revenue of almost a million dollars versus expenses of a million point 318. And I think for that period of time, we're really happy that we've been able to add that much to covering our costs of operation down there, and those expenses are everything from capital investment to personnel. So yes, 6.6 million looks like a lot. It isn't something we're expecting to do overnight or within the next 24 months. It will take time to accomplish this, but this is the vision that we have. This is what we're recommending, the direction that we take, and we are, after all, repairing 30 years of neglect. So it's taking time, and it's taking a lot of thought and a lot of work.
Comments, council?
I appreciate your work down there. It certainly looks better. I ride down there every once in a while just to check the progress, and, and I really do appreciate what you've done. Any, I guess it's pretty early on, but have you done some projections on what you think you would generate from a dry slip? I mean, I know we've seen some presentation on that before, but.
Yes. Interestingly enough too, you know, the, the visual concept was presented at the State of the City, and it was received very well there, and as a result of that, we already have some people who've come down to the marina, put their names on a waiting list. We've, we've run figures, and now with the new total figure, taking a look at not just the building itself, but everything else that's involved, including reinforcing the, the splash area, the bulkhead and, and all of that, the pad that needs to be poured, all of that, and the forklift. Our figures are coming in if we're charging, based on a 30-foot boat at $11 a foot per boat. We're looking at a four and a half, best-case scenario with 100% occupancy, payback to years, that is, to 12 and a half years payback. At the worst-case scenario, that's a 25-foot boat and 50% occupancy. Reality of life is somewhere in between, but it isn't, we're looking at six-figure income every year with the exception of having only 25-foot boats at 50% occupancy. That's the only time we drop below the six-figure.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Mazur, you say four and a half to 12 and a half year payback. That is for, just for that dry storage and the forklift? What, what does that pay back?
Yes, that includes everything, from the building to the forklift, to the cement pad, to that entire phase one construction.
So phase one payback?
Right.
Okay, great.
And as I said, you know, it sounds scary. When we looked at dry storage, they mostly have 90 to 95% capacity, and there's no reason why we wouldn't have the same. To think that we would have a building with only 50% capacity is, is silly. It just, that's not out there. The demand is, is out there for the dry storage.
You know, we've talked about this before, Ms. Mazur, and I, you know, we've seen this, some of this presentation, and even a little more visual than this even.
Mm-hmm.
And the, the phase one, I'm, I'm a big fan of, and I'm a pretty big fan of phase two, and phase three, you got to do something, and phase four, eh, maybe. It's a pretty big price tag. You start reaching diminishing returns after you get past that phase one. It's a, it's a mighty expensive project. Of course, if you can get grant money.
We will be looking every year. Every year we're looking for grant money, and even if we get it this year, we'll continue looking for more grant money.
You don't happen to have that phase two price broken down, do you?
I can tell you which of the elements in there are included in phase two. It would be the mobile. It would be the mobile buildings. That's when we take down the existing buildings and those mobile buildings, five of them. Now, they're going to be different sizes, but you should have that is building structures, the cottages. It's listed under buildings and structures. You have that figure. I think that's high. We're using them. One will be the ship store and marina office. The other one will be the bathrooms for men and women. Then one for laundry. So that's going to be a much smaller building. One will be for storage for the marina because once we remove the other buildings, we need storage. And the fifth one, excuse me, the fifth one that's illustrated there, we've started talking recently, we have requests for dock boxes and lockers, which we do not permit. We don't have wide docks, so we're not permitting them at the moment. But it occurred to us that having that fifth building there where we can have lock boxes and lockers in there for rent and they garner 25 to 65 dollars a month, depending on the size. And then they're out of sight, but they're still available to the boaters who want them.
What else is that? I see one of the cotton Phase Two.
See, that's what so much is done. We will have landscaping.
For instance, is that slip, that covered slip roof replacement in there, Phase Two?
That covered slip replacement is under the grant. And that is, I'm sorry, that is, that's a big number. I'm not sure where.
It's a huge number, yeah. That kind of jumps out at you.
Yeah, it's huge and I don't understand why that, because we would be covering it with the same roof that's on the hangout and that's just not going to get to that point. I don't know where that number came from unless there's some structure involved in that, but we've looked at it and we don't see it.
464,000 for those of you that can't see the paper.
No. That's, that's out of line, but that's in the grant. If we don't get the grant, I can promise you right now, that's going to drop by 75% at the minimum.
Okay. So there could be some value engineering.
Oh, there's a lot of value engineering that can be done in this, absolutely. And we've been using in-house and I have to tell you, they save us tens of thousands of dollars, our guys doing a lot of the work. They're doing the electrical down there now that they've been down there overseeing the project. Yeah, having, having our own engineering, it has saved us a lot of money and they've done a super job. They understand our needs. They talk with us. They know what we want. They're there, ready and willing to get it done and they've done a super job. It's great working with the guys.
Ms. Mazur, do you want some kind of direction? Just give us an update?
What we're looking for is, is your nod, that, yeah, this is the direction we'd like to go in. This is the concept that you're in agreement with. We would, of course, you know, everything we're coming back to you for. I mean, at any point in time, you can say, no, wait a minute, that's, that's not worth it. But as we go through all of this, for example, the Phase One, you'll see every single dime that's going to be coming up in the 2021 budget. And I can tell you right now, we're including the forklift, but in all honesty, I've learned how slow things churn in the city. And since we don't know when the budget will get, get passed and then you go out for bids for all the different phases, we have to get the engineered drawings, we go out for bids, we look at the bids. By the time we get started, there's no point in owning a forklift before you're ready to use it. I don't see that happening until the '22 budget, frankly.
Well, I'll go first. I'll just say that, you know, I like the plans. I don't, I don't know that I like the price tag for all of it and I don't know, you know, that I'm crazy about four so much, maybe something, but you know, I don't know, lighthouse, 300 grand, I don't know. Phase Three, maybe fancy, but as far as Phase One goes, and to a little bit lesser degree, you know, I'm personally, I know that there's going to be some difference of opinion up here. I'm personally in favor of moving forward with Phase One and, you know, but I would like to see some, some, some real cost quotes and, you know, and have the ability to, you know, sharpen the pencil on that if need be.
Oh, yes.
I think on the two key components, which is the proposed dry storage facility and the forklift, I think you've got very reasonable numbers on those. And in fact, on that forklift, if you could find a really good used one, it could be, you know, a good bit less than that.
Yes, and we're looking. Randy is out there all the time looking for us, checking on unused forklifts. It's always easy to get a new one, but picking up a used one. So he's keeping his eye open for us. We are all about at every point in time, saving money where we can. This is, you know, preliminary. If we got everything we wanted, could do it tomorrow, this is what, what it's going to cost us, but not necessarily everything that's here is going to get done. You know, and I think the Poor Man's Yacht Club is the perfect example of something that went from a cost that presents us with nothing to something that gives us revenue at the marina, which makes far more sense right now. Maybe sometime 10 years from now, somebody will say, let's, let's do the Poor Man's Yacht Club. We need it.
Mr. Boone?
Well, personally, you know, I like it all the way across the board. I really like the fact that with your numbers coming in, you know, when we first started this, we had to get a plan going. That's the first thing. We've got to get a plan. We finally got it worked. You did a very nice job of getting this and getting this plan moved forward and getting a picturesque design on it that we saw. And then you look at the fact that the, what we have done, you know, with basically through your sheer effort was, is paid for 79% within a year and a half.
Yeah.
I don't think we have anything in this town that does that. And so, and plus the fact that, you know, everybody, you're speculating on what it can do and this far away surpassed what we thought it was going to do.
Mm-hmm.
And I've had nothing but, people talk to me about what the vast improvements that we've done down here. And I, you know, I personally think this is what it's going to take in order to continuously take the financial burden in the long run off the city of effort where this thing will pay for itself. And actually, I think over a period of time, it'll help put money into the budget.
I think so. Our goal is to be self-sufficient, absolutely. City Marina, there's no reason for city marinas not to be. It takes some effort and some investment in the first place, but that's our goal.
Let's say, when you do 79% paid for first year and a half, I call that, that pretty darn good.
Yeah, Evan and I were surprised. I knew it was going to be good, but I was surprised that it was as good as that.
It was an excellent job.
We got, we got two more items. Councilman Brown?
Yeah, unlike Jack, I do like the lighthouse.
Me too.
But, you know, in fact, starting with Phase One.
Find your way home.
You know, I haven't been a proponent for the dry storage from day one. I just think that needs to be done by, you know, a private, private investor. It shouldn't be done within the city. I mean, do we know what, what kind of lease we'd be able to get? We have no idea.
No, because in all honesty, we disagree. So we have not looked at that.
I just think the liability, you know, for the city to be handling, you know, $200,000 center consoles and the liability of the facility itself, I'm just not a big fan of it. And hey, I appreciate that. It looks great down there, the marina, the improvements that have been done. You know, kudos to you and the staff. It looks, it looks good down there, but that's just my only two, on the, on the Phase One. I'm not a big fan of the city.
I think you should be prepared that even if we were to look at leasing a facility like that out, we would have to provide the facility. We still have the expense. And like, we, we didn't go with the boatyard scenario because the city would never get its money back out of what it had to provide in order for somebody to set up business there. And nobody's going to invest that kind of money on city property, knowing that when it's all over, said and done, it belongs to us. And that's what happens when you erect things on city property.
I was approached by somebody two weeks ago about a public-private partnership on that exact idea, so I wouldn't necessarily throw it out of the window.
Well, if you would share that name with me, I'll certainly research the cost and the potential for that.
Will do.
Thank you.
Counsel McGonigys?
Again, I think Lynn's done a great job and staff on fixing this area up and moving in the right direction. I'd just like a little more time personally to maybe digest some of the numbers and think through process, but in general, I'm, I mean, I like the direction you're headed and I agree with Robert. I kind of like the lighthouse idea.
And we actually have a slip holder who came over to me the other day and said he has some connections with lighthouses, new use and otherwise, and he would be very happy to help us find one at a beneficial price.
Let me be clear, I like lighthouses. I just don't know that I like $365,000 lighthouse with your props.
I hear you on that. I just, again, yeah, I'd like to just digest those numbers, but, but thank you for everything you've done.
It's been my pleasure, really has been.
Counsel Robinson?
Sure. Yeah, Lynn, the pictures look great. The design looks great, but I kind of agree with Jimmy that I'd like to see a little bit more kind of what the concrete costs are going to be as we start looking to move forward with it. You know, there are a lot of big numbers here. I did appreciate how you kind of walked us into it and got us excited about the project and then gave us the price. That's not a bad idea, but no, I would like a little, just a little more definitive pricing on some of this stuff and to see kind of, you know, how much we're looking at over what period of time before we get to where we're wanting to go.
My, my problem with that, and I have no issue with, you know, updating the prices as we go along and they'll certainly be updated all along, but this gets stretched out. I think our most immediate pricing would be Phase One. Then as we're doing Phase One, we can look at Phase Two and start getting some real pricing on that. But like I said, none of this is fixed. These are very flexible phases so that if something happens along the way, that it's more affordable to do one thing that's going, that, you know, you all really like better than something else, we can do that. So we have, we have flexibility and we will always be checking our pricing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thanks, Lynn. All right, next item on the work session would be a presentation and a discussion of the Greenco Clean Workforce Courses and Certifications. Mr. David Green?
Good evening and thank you for taking the time not to roll back the clock to the previous presentation, but with respect to forklifts, if you just have one and it goes down on July 4th or Memorial Day weekend in a building full of boats, you might want a backup used one onsite and a potential lease purchase on a new one. Just don't underestimate the importance of a negative lift forklift when it relates to dropping, splashing boats in the water out of a dry storage. Just a cautionary tale, not, not the reason I'm here, but important thing to note. So in light of the COVID response, I'm here to discuss with you a program I've developed as you may know as a lawyer and decades of emergency management and disaster recovery response. I took a special interest in the, and concern with respect to the lack of knowledge in the workforce related to coronavirus response and viral transmission. I then proceeded to dedicate months in working with a team of PhD professors, epidemiologists, subject matter experts around the country and with local online universities specializing in safety, training in protocol, but with a global presence of 30 plus thousand students. And this is part of a larger patent pending emergency management and disaster recovery response plan that I'm working on. And what I've, where we are now is with Greenco Clean, we have the city of Gulf Shores currently training municipal employees. They will be training their school system employees and their city schools. The city of Orange Beach adopted a resolution and is training employees. Alabaster City School System was training 88 and contacted me and wanted, let me know that they're interested in training another 112 employees. So I'll first go to the ask. I'll explain more about where we are and then I'll go back to the ask. The ask would be that the city of Fairhope consider allocating funds, whether existing in your budget for workforce training and educational certification in existing budgets or taking the opportunity to get funds from those which are allocated and detailed from CARES Act funding through the Department of Finance in the state of Alabama to each municipality. Secondly, the second component, and we have five courses of online curriculum available from free to train the trainer. It can all be done online. At a later date, we can provide on-the-job training and consulting services. I would also ask that you consider joining other legislators throughout the state municipalities in asking the governor's office by and through their coronavirus response committee to basically ease the process and make a statewide licensing in effect. It's more money, but it pushes the price down per person. You may be aware that I offered a discount on the curriculum course, the primary course that the municipalities in this county and in others are taking to a $100 per person cost for a 90-day period. Sommerdale, Orange Beach and Gulf Shores and Alabaster City Schools, for example, took that opportunity. We're also working with other states as well. We've received a lot of support locally from restaurant industry, even dental offices, the film and music industry has been decimated with respect to workers' comp and insurance costs, even if you can go back to working, things open back up. If you have the ability to obtain a bond, a finance or workers' comp, it can be detrimental to the viability of financing certain types of projects and work. So we've been working on this for, for months. It's been well received and I know now we're well into the, the world is opening back up phase and I in no way, as a small business owner, have an interest in placing a burden on small business or a prohibitive cost. But you need look no further than the recent report from the CDC wherein they did a, conducted a survey and it's frightening the number of people that ingested chemicals and bleached and rubbed disinfectants all over their bodies and other areas, believing that they were repelling or warding off or clearing themselves from viral transmission. This is published June 5th. This is not old, this is new. So as we reopen our nation, we'll reopen our schools. You may or may not be aware that if we close our schools, it costs our nation $50 billion a month. I don't believe that that's sustainable. I don't believe that our nation will sit idly by in a stand-down position anymore. I think that we did that and the curve has, has, we believed flattened, but if you look at the numbers, the cases continue to go up and the deaths continue to go up and we enjoy being in a high heat and a high humidity and a high sunshine area with a lot of outdoor activities for residents and tourists and we're blessed and benefited by that. But when cold and flu season returns, it will correspond with the time that we return to schools and congregating at football games and activities and churches and other things. And naturally, that's when cold and flu season will reoccur. And in speaking with globally recognized infectious disease specialists, there's a concern that the numbers will, will go up substantially. I subscribe to the philosophy, generally speaking, that if you believe in education, that you don't believe that it's appropriate to stop learning. And you don't believe that it's appropriate to stop learning basic tasks and things that improve safety throughout the community. We wear seat belts now. There was a time when people fought that as an infringement of their civil liberties. We wear motorcycle helmets now while many reject that as an infringement upon their freedom. But we do know that if you wear a seat belt and you wear a motorcycle helmet, you reduce the likelihood that a minor accident or incident will place you in an ambulance and in the hospital system. At the same time, if we educate and train practice and proper procedure protocols for standardization, for which none exist in the state of Alabama, we can potentially begin to educate the public and develop practices and procedures that become commonplace, like wearing a seat belt or a motorcycle helmet, thereby indirectly benefiting our health and medical systems and reducing the number of people that find themselves in the hospital. And I'll remind you that since the cases are still going up and the number of deaths are still going up, it's, it's not an issue that's historical, it's an issue that's, that's pretty important currently. So at, at a discounted cost to the municipalities of Bowlin County and school systems of $100 per employee, you could consider educating all of the employees of the city or select by department heads, those which you believe are more appropriately suited. Certain members of the fire department that take hazmat training might want to take higher levels of train the trainer, whereas public works, parks and recreation, municipal facilities and maintenance, others might want to take certain different levels. We can package that for the city. The CARES Act funding, as highlighted by the Department of Finance link on the comptroller's website for the state of Alabama, outlines a pretty simple process and procedure whereby you can fill out a one-page application for funding and tap into the allocated funds to the city of Fairhope. to the city of Fairhope, which are $907,742.40. I hardly think that at up to a hundred or a few hundred dollars per employee, you would even scratch the surface of that eligible funding by training everyone in the city. So, that's one option for the city participating in the program and allocating existing funds in the budget, which is what Gulf Shores and Orange Beach have done. Take the opportunity to apply for available funds of the CARES Act, which are now available. This is a May 28th dated letter that y'all may or may not be aware of. And then additionally, I would ask that you potentially support the request for a statewide license, in which case we will do statewide marketing, community outreach, radio, webinars, outreach in the school systems, and it will be a much more comprehensive program and thereby pushing the cost down to each individual throughout the state to maybe thirty, forty dollars, where we could educate and train more than a half a million employees in the, in the cities, counties, state government and school systems. That number's about three hundred thousand and clearly we could train the private sector employees as well. So we have restaurants participating in it, businesses, school systems and municipalities. And I'm open for any number of questions you'd like to ask about it. But we're excited about the, the process and the possibility that this could become widespread. We've received, by the way, in about the second or third week of March, the green light from the governor's office on this project to proceed. We've been working with AIDT, as you may know, which is workforce development in the state of Alabama. All of their facilities were closed. They'll begin a second phase providing grant monies for Greenco to hire these people to help present this program beyond the online component throughout the state or locally or regionally wherever it's adopted. So, I know that's a mouthful, but I know y'all have three or four key items that you wanted to get to today and I didn't want to dominate the time.
Councilman Robinson, any questions?
I don't have any. Good presentation. I'd like to see more of what's in that letter. I was not aware of it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Councilman Conyers?
I don't really have any questions. Thank you there, David. Appreciate the presentation.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Councilman Brown?
Yeah, thanks for coming today, David. And yeah, this is, I guess the personnel training is in the mayor's wheelhouse, but I appreciate you coming just so we could all hear your presentation and see what's available. And, you know, I think training, like you said, getting something that's universal where everybody's not clinging to a different standard, where it might not make a difference is a good idea. So, anyway, thanks for being here.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Councilman Ben?
The only thing I think about is with all the different systems that fix this problem, it'd be nice to have one that probably worked.
That, that's my, my plan. I hope, I hope to have that opportunity.
I like that idea.
So, I'll give you one example real quick that, you know, we're currently recovering, about to complete the recovery of a tornado project outside of Chattanooga for a county. And there's certain procedures, training protocols that always take place in all type of recovery. If you work in the state of Georgia and you work on the state highways, every person on the job, no matter what, must go through two, two full days of in-person eight-hour training with a subject matter expert, demonstrating physically the ability and taking a written test that they're capable of flagging traffic for safety on the highways in the state of Georgia, all right? Become a card-carrying traffic flagger, all right? In the state of Alabama, I could disinfect every building as a cleaning company and all I have to do is tell you, don't worry, we follow the CDC guidelines. My argument is that there are many, many experts and professional cleaning companies, custodians, lodging partners in hotels and condos at the beach and school custodians that really know their job and do it well. But you can watch commercials on television of chemicals being sprayed on and immediately wiped off. And it's as though no one has read the contact time off the enlist from the EPA, which clearly would detail that it's no effect. So instead of doing a lot of work and having no effect or being like Jefferson County and paying $900,000 to disinfect your school systems, I would argue that that's unsustainable. The federal tax money will run out and the custodians in the school systems around the cities will be none the wiser. So I think we owe it to ourselves to educate and train people so that it can become common knowledge and we increase the, the basic awareness thereby increasing safety. I thank you for your time.
I haven't got to my questions yet.
Yes, sir.
I go last of everybody, so hang on, hang on a minute. Real quick, how, how long is the training? Where does the training occur and do you come to us, do they go to you? I hadn't heard any details on that.
So, the training at this point is online and there are modules that take anywhere from a few hours to, in online educational training, you have things that are referred to as contact time. So, that means if you read every document available, if you watch every video, if you go through every aspect of it, all the way to train the trainer might be forty hours. But the primary course for the municipal employee that's being taken can be done in a half a day or less and so, and the videos and other things are available. Soon, at the, at the moment Columbia Southern University is hosting this stuff online. It's available for registration. You can go to the website, greencoclean.com and find the information. You can look at the news section on that website and you can see the resolution from the city of Orange Beach. You can see an endorsement video from Mayor Robert Kraft of Gulf Shores and we'll be adding additional stuff soon. But very soon, we'll be rolling the hosting of this away from Columbia Southern and independently through Greenco and at that time, it'll be available on a mobile phone or other mobile device. Our goal with massive statewide funding will be to develop an app where this will be available with lots of notifications. This would be interesting potentially to you. So the courses are anywhere from a few hours to a week long or less, depending upon the level of those courses. If we're able to have the app with statewide funding, you could have push notifications from the city of Fairhope about safety procedures, protocols, for example, social distancing downtown, walking in shops, other sanitization, disinfecting, things of that nature, respect to going to the parks and public spaces, those things could become available to the public as they enter the city and come downtown. The funding would, would provide that and it would be available. We could work with y'all to custom tailor that to send your message to people that visit here. So there's a lot of marketing and a tremendous consumer upside on this.
Thank you, David. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. I'll take the opportunity to leave these documents with you.
Oh, yeah, great.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just hand them, you'll start down there and just pass them down.
Mr. White, if you want to make your way up here. We'll give you, we'll, we'll go beyond the work session.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Good evening. I will try to simplify this and keep it to a minimum, but there's nothing really simple about it, so I'll do the best I can.
Sure.
I'm really looking for, for guidance on this. We've had some discussion about fee structures and different ideas to come up with for all of our sports facilities. There's been a lot of discussion about soccer, but also we, we need to have these things in place for all sports, baseball, softball and everything across the board. Right now, we are having, you know, several issues in our parks with travel teams and private instruction at Founders and Valana. My understanding is Locksley and Daphne has really cracked down on travel teams and so everybody's kind of flocking to us right now. We're going to have our work cut out for us to try to police this stuff because obviously they know that my workforce goes home at three o'clock, three-thirty in the afternoon, so that's when everybody comes out. But I will, I will figure that out. But to go through this information, basically what I've given you on the first sheet is a fee structure that was presented by the rec board and approved by the rec board. And you see there the, the fees they proposed is fifty dollars per field per day. And then if it were, you know, something that required staff, like a softball tournament, it would be thirty dollars per man hour and additional fees would be set on as needed case basis. We would require a $250 deposit at the time for application for tournaments. This is, this is what the rec board approved. Now this obviously applies to anybody that would classify as a travel organization or any league that has paid staff or personnel. We're not talking about recreational leagues that have solely volunteers running them. On the second sheet is some fees that, that Marcus and I were working on earlier, just to give you guys some options. And in that, we included the fifty dollars per field per day, the thirty dollars a man hour, but we also had some other additional fees in there, a hundred and fifty dollars for field setup or painting, lining the fields to get them ready, you know, for spring or fall season. Fifty dollars per hour for lighting. We're not receiving any, any money currently for lighting and, and to be honest with you, our lighting is not metered. So, there's really no way of me tracking exactly how much recreation is using as far as lighting and/or water because neither one of them is, is metered. So that's the, that's the two options with those. The third of form there is some different ideas of what we could be charging for tournaments and/or camps. You see the different rates for Founders, Manly, Barnwell, Softball and Skate Park. Basically, that would be an hourly rate to use the fields, so that would be something else to consider. Also, on page two of that, we, we get into some other fees as far as vendor fees. If they were to have a vendor onsite selling items or food, we would expect to receive a percentage there. And then you go into different fees for hard costs for us to run different tournaments. Quick dry would be field conditioner, any facility damage, we would require deposits upfront. Obviously, that would be refundable. And then again, fees for, for lighting and staff members and field setup and lining. On the last sheet that I gave you is basically an example of, this would be the Manly Soccer Complex and how much field usage is currently being utilized out there by both Recreation League and Academy. This does not include the Gulf Coast Rangers, which is a totally separate travel organization that has been operating out there in years past. So, that kind of gives you an idea of how much each entity is using the fields. Obviously, the number at the bottom would reflect if, if we charged the fifty dollar per field per day and gave the academy the discounted rate because they do help facilitate the recreational league, if we gave them the, the discounted rate, they would end up paying, what was it, Marcus, twenty-five dollars?
Twenty-five, well, twenty-five percent of the total, whatever's total.
Yeah. Basically, that number would reflect what they would pay at the end of the year. So I guess, in all that said, I'm looking to you guys for what direction you really want to go. Do we want to keep it simple and, and, you know, have the, the basic fee structure? Do we want to get into different fees for, you know, different services and things that we provide? I'm basically looking to you guys. And I know we're not going to get any kind of resolution on this tonight because we're going to have to decipher through this information, but I will tell you that the academy soccer club has reached out to me. They want to start having camps on the fifteenth. And I'm also getting a lot of questions from both baseball and softball, from private instructors and travel teams on what they need to do to be able to use our facility. So I'd really like to get, you know, some of these fee structures in place so I can give them some information.
Pat, the fee structure's pretty complicated, which doesn't bother me too much. I don't, I don't, I mean, I hear a lot of up here, you know, wanting to simplify things and, you know, and that's great, but, but sometimes it's, it's not always that easy to oversimplify it.
Right.
But I want to go to something maybe a little bit simpler and that is on the, the sheet that says approved by the rec board.
Yes, sir.
Number nine talks about the organization being considered inside the city. The organizer must show proof that at least eighty percent of the participants are residents of the city of Fairhope.
Right.
Well, I mean, we have a lot of people that live in 36532 that aren't technically residents of the city of Fairhope. So then I, I looked over and I thought you covered it. Number twelve on the fee structure, option two says, "The organizer must show proof that at least eighty percent of the participants are residents of the city of Fairhope." And it says, "Living in its school feeder pattern." So, then you got, you got to still be a resident, but I think maybe that was something that was supposed to be taken out of there. We're all talking kids here, right?
Right.
So, there's no adult participation. So I would say that if they're all school age kids, it would just be if they live in the Fairhope feeder pattern.
Feeder pattern.
Because they may not go to a Fairhope school. They could go to, they go Bayside, they could go to St. Michael's, they could go across the bay, some, some kids do, but they still play ball here in Fairhope and.
Right.
That was one of the things that we made, you may be looking at the one that was approved versus the one that Pat and I kind of worked out in addition and that, we added that language in there within the Fairhope school feeder pattern. Those are the ones that are qualified to come in and include about eighty percent and not just a resident of the city.
Yeah, well, it says, the one that says, "Are residents of the city of Fairhope, living in its school feeder pattern." I would just get rid of the words, "are residents." I would just say, "are living in the school feeder pattern."
And then I agree, that's correct. That's the intent of it. And with regard to the, the one agreement that was approved, we took out all the tournament language and placed it in a separate document and left that just the facility rental agreement portion of it and then completely separated the tournament agreement. And we modeled this off of what Auburn has done with their facilities and their facility use agreement and they actually kind of worked together.
Was that option two?
That's option two and also the tournament agreement.
Okay.
The city of Fairhope Recreation Tournament Agreement, the five tournaments and camps.
Is that fifty dollar, you know, on that, fifty dollar per hour for lighting too? That, it, you know, it seems like we need to get a handle on what that really costs. That may be kind of arbitrary. If you've got ten fields out there or nine fields out there at Soccer Complex, somebody organized a tournament.
Yeah, I'd like to know what it costs.
And it lasts several hours in the evening, they're going to have a, what is that, $450 per hour bill? They're not going to be able to conduct a tournament out there, I don't think. It seems prohibitive.
Metered and also if you're, if you fall under that category of the nonprofit with your primary place of business here, you can get a discount off of that. I think that's what that brings.
Some of those, you know, I can, I can agree with some of these, but that one seems a little bit arbitrary and it needs a little work and it might be that it's just stricken and then massaged or, or we could come back with some information in which we could put, put that in there, but that's, that, that's getting on up there. And, you know, there's also the, the argument to be made by citizens that say, "Well, you know, that's why we pay taxes and so you do get certain amenities." And there's a certain amount of usage that goes along with this. And I guess, you know, we're not making any money on this. We're losing, it's all a losing proposition for the city, but we have to, we do, they do, we do offset the costs with, with tax revenues as, as well, I guess, what I'm trying to say, some of them.
These don't apply to your recreation league, so your baseball, football, soccer, lacrosse, they're all rec. They're not paying any of these fees associated with this. These are all the private corporations that come in and all tournaments sort of have games on the outside.
Do you think that you may have people that will go out and hire an attorney, achieve a nonprofit status? They're really not making a profit, but. a nonprofit status? They're really not making a profit, but the coach is being paid, and they're really kind of violating the spirit of what a nonprofit is. But there's a lot of those types of corporations around.
Yeah, they are currently nonprofit. They are nonprofit now. But, again, you know, there's a lot of paid staff and coaches out there, and that's kind of what brought us to this point.
Right. Well, if they maintain that nonprofit status, is it, does it do anything to, do these new fees do anything to alleviate the issue of not getting revenue, I guess?
Well, it brings us, basically what we talked about, was it brings us into legality. You know, it's against state constitution law to operate a corporation, nonprofit or not, where you have paid personnel out there on a tax-paid facility.
I think to answer your question, I don't know if you're going to be able to police that as far as nonprofit or non-profit, because you well know that you can have a nonprofit entity, and you can make all the money in the interior of that, but you don't actually show any numbers on the actual corporation. And I don't know how to do that. The only reason we put in there the issue with regard to 80% within the school feeder pattern is to make sure that those businesses were local, and that they had the majority of their kids from our school feeder patterns. So, it's not just a nonprofit, it's a nonprofit plus that additional factor. And that way, you couldn't be a nonprofit from Gulf Shores or from Florida and come in here and get the same thing, that you're paying full freight if you don't have kids that are local kids in there.
So, it has to be both, then?
It has to be both.
Meet both criteria. Counsel, have questions?
I had a couple of questions, and looking at the reservation agreement. If you go down towards the bottom of that first page, and then the top of the second page, things like the skateboard park and the Frisbee Golf Course, is that if you were blocking out the entire courses for an event, or are you not?
Correct, I have a tournament, yes.
Okay, so you're not talking about charging a couple of kids that want to go to Skate Park?
No, not at all.
So, the reservation, it says reservation, so that's, you get a reserved time?
Right.
There happens, I think, one or two Frisbee Golf tournaments, and so if they weren't to block out that time, they would be able to do that through this reservation agreement.
Gotcha.
Counsel, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I thought we'd found a resolution for this a couple of months ago, did we not? Have to go back and look.
What they came, I never heard anything they've been resolved. What they came back with was a situation that would put one umbrella between rec soccer and academy, and nobody ever, we told them they had to split the two, have two independent parties, and one could help run the other one. And they never came back and said, "We're willing to do that." Additionally, if you run another one umbrella, and you make more than $15,000, or it's costing the city more than $15,000, you've got to bid it out. So, we run afoul of the bid laws if we go for whatever they.
We've been through all this. We'd.
I know, but there, you can't, even if you go bid it out and nobody else bids, but you've got multiple bidders, you can't, my understanding is you can't do that. That's what the League of Municipalities told us on that. But in regard to that, we don't start a rec league until fall, is that right, in for soccer? But we've got time to iron out any kind of contracts that may be consistent with what you're talking about between now and then. We've got to get them to the table to iron out the details, and make sure we're in compliance.
Do they need an answer before the 15th, though?
I just need something temporarily in place to get me through these camps that they're wanting to have on the 15th, and throughout the summer, throughout the month of June and July.
I really, you know, take advantage of Mr. Kizer being here, and kind of, would it offend you if I asked him? He's been involved in a lot of these discussions.
Not a bit.
For, Bob, would I, is it okay for me to ask you for some feedback? I mean, I know you've been heavily involved, not only rec board, but, you know, soccer leagues, and probably had a hand in almost all the youth leagues at some point in time or another.
I did, and had a hand in writing most of the agreement that you're looking at there, based on the Auburn model. And, you know, what we were trying to work towards is, how do we get ourselves in compliance, and not price ourselves and run everybody off?
Right.
I mean, we built a $5 million soccer complex out there, and we can real easily chase everybody away and have nobody playing. So, the idea is, how do we provide the services that our community deserves, which is a recreation program, an academy program, a club program? How do we make that accessible to the residents of Fairhope, and do it so that it's not so cost prohibitive?
Do you have a preference in the options here, the rec board? I don't know if you've seen them. Pat, does he know the difference between the two?
I haven't seen the other options. I know what was in the, what was originally passed by the Recreation Board. As I say, I drafted that. That was done in conjunction with talking with the rec leagues within the city, had some consultations with Marcus along the way. And as I say, they were modeled after the Auburn agreements, which is what was, that was supposed to be the model by the League of Municipalities.
So, are you okay with the reservation agreement? Have you seen that?
That, I just saw that in passing today.
Okay, has the rec board seen this?
They have not seen that.
Okay.
And I'll tell you, just in the quick look, I just thought we were a little more complicated and a little more expensive than we needed to be. You know, as you talk about doing things like the lighting and that sort of stuff, again, you're going to, you're going to price, you're going to chase folks out of using our facilities, and I don't think that's what our objective is.
The rec board doesn't include that, so just to let you know that. I was just trying to, if there was a simple way for counsel to say A or B, and move the needle, or, you know, because if we go back to rec board and say, "All right, we need a recommendation from you guys. You're going to have to study it. It's going to get, it's going to be August before we know." So, counsel, are you with me? I'm just trying to, I'm trying to just move the bar here, give them some kind of idea of.
If you threw it back at me, we're meeting next week, and we would, we would come to resolution on it if, you know, if that was an issue. What we're really looking for is, can we give a, can we use one of those models, either the one that the rec board came up with initially? Can we use that as a draft that we can give to the soccer folks, that they can go ahead and get started based on that, with the knowledge that this is under review right now, and it may get changed?
So, let me ask Mr. White that question. Let me put the ball back in your court. How do you feel about the fee structure approved by the rec board?
I mean, I like the simplicity of it. I think it's pretty clean and simple. And that was my initial question to you guys. Do you want to be simple and clean with it, or do we want to look at other fees for other services that we're providing?
So, are these two, would you, if you adopted the structure approved by the rec board, would you not have the reservation agreement? You still have this. They're still separate documents, right?
Again, that's going to be up to which direction we want to go. We could operate with, you know, the tournaments under this same simple structure if we chose to.
Which you could do also is only look at the tournament, or the tournament and camp issues, because that's the only thing that's going to take place between now and summer. And actually, that, to be honest with you, is less for the city, because you're looking at a half rate of $250 for Manly, and right here, they're looking at per day, and then you're looking at $450 per field per day on the other. So, you're actually looking at a little less, but you get some setup fees, you know, you're paying your staff to go out there and line the fields and mark the fields and whatnot, but it's probably half ago, one way or the other, it'll be about the same coming in. And there's no, as far as the other allocation of revenues and expenses, there's nothing in there with regard to a camp that would be relevant to this. And if they're meeting next week, or this week on the, with rec board, they can get a look at this additional document. All we did really is carve out the tournament and camps, because we want, you know, we want something in there. They're making $130,000 over a weekend on a soccer tournament, and the city's not getting anything. There's a problem with that, with the issues that are going to close down with that document, and then this other document leaving here. Somebody wants to go just rent the fields, is all that was.
So, let me, you said a lot right there, and a lot of invoking a lot of documents. So, if I go to this reservation agreement, that needs to be considered before these camps or not?
Something should be, in order to give them a daily rate. Now, if you give them this other one, it's $450 a day per field. If they live in $900 for two a camp, this would be $500 for two a camp, plus $100 per setup and lining. Six fifty. There isn't any type of, you know, gate fee or parking fee split, because there is nothing like that associated with camp that we're aware of. I'm just trying to get through, we're talking about just trying to get through this camp that's got to start in two weeks. That would kind of give you an idea, but it would give, it gives Pat a security deposit, it gives a damage deposit, and it gives them, you know, the field lining money that they need to get, or should get, and then it gives them a daily rate.
So, counsel, I would just, if, this is a lot to digest, but I would, I would be in favor of the reservation agreement for now, and then, you know, I could take either one, either or of these fee structures right now. Maybe the simpler one for now, the rec board approved. For one thing, it's simpler, and secondly, it's already rec board approved.
Well, the problem with the rec board, in one, you've got conflicting language with tournament reservation fees, and you've also got amounts already preset for a contract that if you have to bid that contract out, somebody else may come in and say, "Well, I'll give you, you know, 12%," or maybe instead of, you've got to look at what the city's giving them.
Let me go back to this, then. Let me try to simplify it a little further, then. Could we adopt that tonight?
We can adopt that tonight. That'll carry you through the summer. And we can work on the contract, if there is potential for a contract without any bid. We can work through that between now and, you know, the end of July, have them ready to go, or if we have to bid it out, we can bid it out before that.
If I might?
Please.
That's more than what, so if you're running a camp out at Manly, you're paying $50 per field. You had indicated $450 per field. It's $50 per field per day, and for a camp, you're typically running two or three fields. So, you're looking at it max $150.
Per day.
Whereas, you're going $25 an hour if you're using the reservation form. Part of.
Wait, I was assuming full use of a full facility. You're maxed out at $250 per facility with the reservation fee, or $25 an hour per field, whatever that's going to come up.
Yeah, I see what you're doing there.
So, I mean, part of.
Your way is $6.50. The other way is?
If you're using every field.
Yeah, and that allows you every field, but they may not need it. What is the other for it?
No, they typically use like three fields for the camp.
What would it be with the rec board approved?
$150.
$150.
$150.
For two days?
$300 for two days, is it?
Yeah, $300.
$300.
The camp is not a two-day camp. I mean, it.
Right, it'd be a week or something like that, right?
Right.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Yeah, Counsel President, I spent a lot of time on this. You recall, you know, several months ago, and I thought we had put this to bed. I do not feel comfortable making any decisions tonight, based on what we've been presented, until I have a chance to look back at my notes.
So, what, if there is no, if there's no action taken, what becomes of the camp? Is there any charges?
You end up pushing them off.
Oh, they can't use it, because they're profiting and using public?
You've got to have some kind of an agreement, because you're not, you're not legal until you've got some kind of an agreement.
Right, that's what, that was my concern.
Well, then, I would say, you know, adopt the one that the rec board recommended, until we have.
Till we have time to review in more detail?
And, so, I've had discussions with, I mean, they've been talking with me also, and they know what's in that draft agreement that the rec board had approved, and they were comfortable with that, and said, "If we've got to wait until there's a sign when that's fine, we'll sign what's there, if that'll allow us to go ahead and get started." And certainly, would buy some time for y'all to look a little deeper into it.
Are they going to be day camps only? No night, no nighttime activities?
Just day, mhm.
Okay.
You could do just a, I mean, a draft resolution, just give a temporary rate schedule for families, maybe more than that, maybe a pound or three pounds.
No.
Now, they should just give Manly.
Be more than a temporary.
Temporary rate agreement pursuant to the fee structure approved by the rec board?
Yeah, only with regard to the fee structure, because I said, that one, it's got, it's got too much of a potential contract with another party in there, and then we took out the tournament stuff, because it conflicts with what this other document says has been used.
Counsel, would you be okay with that?
Yeah, for temporary, yeah, I'd be good with that.
I didn't know we were going to have to take some action tonight, but it sounds like if we want these people to be able to have this camp, that we're going to have to take some action tonight.
You want?
So, I'm looking for direction.
$50 a day per field, and then is there any setup, $30 an hour per staff, any setup fees, or would that be included with your staff?
I mean, I guess I don't have a problem with the structure approved by the rec board, if it's already been approved by the rec board, but.
That's the $30 per, for the staff member that goes up there and, you know, right?
$30 per hour for per staff member.
That typically is not a, there's not a staff member out there. I mean, really, the only place that we see a staff member is when you're running a softball tournament. You've got to have somebody onsite all day to keep relining the fields and.
Yeah, that's what I didn't know, that included lining the fields and the crowd to start and marking the field. If that would be included with the time.
They typically don't want lined fields for the camp.
They don't.
I don't even see it on there. Can we do that?
Temporary rate of $50 per play day per field.
Well, we just do the rec board, it's pretty detailed in there. I would just say that number nine, though, should say that 80% of the participants are, reside within the Fairhope feeder pattern.
Yeah. That was what our intent was, we just.
Right, sure. I understand.
I'm a lousy lawyer, what can I say?
All right.
Our, I guess, a clarification on what we're doing.
Fee structure approved by rec board, I'm hearing.
Resolution, I think, the fee structure approved by the rec board, $50 a day per play day, $30.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think you have to. It's described in there. I mean, it's all.
As described in the proposed resolution, okay.
Right. Other change would just be number nine, and I'll just line through that and say, "Organizer must show proof that at least 80% of participants are, that live within the Fairhope school feeder pattern."
That's an easy one, you're at about 95%.
Is that good enough for tonight, Pat?
Yes, sir.
That moved the needle?
That's what I needed, yep.
Okay. That moved the needle, Bob?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Thanks, sir.
All right. We don't have time for an agenda meeting. If you have committee updates, you can give them during your council comments. Let's go ahead and adjourn, and come back in just a couple of minutes to get started with the council.